I'd like to call the meeting to order for the April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. He stands to pledge, pledge his to me. Effectively, do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the board?
I will. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Uh, here, remote from the township McComb, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Mr. Provazano? Absent? And excused?
I believe so.
Okay. Mr. Shudo? Okay, I don't hear him. Mr. Shudo, absent, excused? Mr. Spatafora?
I'm present on site at the McComb Township offices in McComb Township, McComb County, Michigan.
Mr. Oliver?
Present at McComb Township offices, McComb County, McComb Township, Michigan.
Rich Bentley, I'm present.
All right, we have a coram. Approval of the minutes for the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Any discussion?
I'm moved to, if there are no other comments, move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, just brief discussion on that. Uh, we didn't do it before this motion, just a reminder, we gotta, um, we gotta exclude, uh, member Provazano, Shudo from roll call votes. We'll have to call him this time. I, I didn't catch that before you started, my apologies, but I just wanted to mention that, so, uh, we didn't forget.
So, do we make a motion to exclude them? Is that what we did?
Yes.
Let's make a motion to.
I'll move on then.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Oliver and seconded by Mr. Bentley to exclude Mr. Provazano and Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Um. Bentley, yes. Uh, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano, uh, gone, Mr. Shudo, um, on, and then, uh, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes. Okay, item number four, approval of the minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting. If there are.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bentley did that earlier, but I'll put you in second, Mr. Tuckfield.
He did. I'm, I'm good to second that, Mr. Bentley's okay with that.
Perfect. Mr. Bentley, the role.
Okay, um, Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. We're both in the minutes, passed. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any questions or discussions?
In terms of no additions, delete, deletions, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, Oliver made the motion?
Second.
Mr. Spatafora, seconded. Bentley?
Yes.
All the role, please.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Uh, item number six, new business, public hearings, public hearing and zoning ordinance amendment, new article XXV one-one, medical marijuana. And I believe marijuana is spelled with a J in that state. Uh, Mr. X, Senator.
Uh, thank you. First, I'll just clarify, uh, marijuana is sometimes spelled with a J, sometimes with an H.
Really?
In all legal documentation, it's typically spelled with an H, that's why we're.
Now, you just learned something new, thank you.
Um, so, a- as many of you are aware, I'm sure, we've had a moratorium on, uh, medical marijuana within the township. Uh, we've had, uh, a number of issues, and we've been working at creating some, some language for an ordinance amendment, uh, that we have in front of you tonight. You all got the full language of that ordinance in your packet. Um, with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Tomlinson to discuss it.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Tim Tomlinson. I am one of the township attorneys. It's my honor and privilege to serve all of you, uh, along with, uh, Aloy and Associates. My firm, Gorkdolen and Towns, PC, we've been in the municipal business for a long time. So, what we've provided to you is an ordinance dealing with, uh, medical marijuana. And ironically, Mr. Chairman, you, uh, you, you, you highlighted a change that needs to happen is the, uh, it needs to be changed from a J to an H because that's consistent with what state law is. But be that as it may, kind of jumping into where we, you know, why we're here and what we're doing. So, there's been three different acts that have been enacted via ballot initiative. Uh, one in two thousand seven, which is the one we're dealing with within this ordinance, and that was the Medical, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, which was a ballot initiative adopted by the people of the state of Michigan. And then we have the Michigan Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act and the, what I'm going to call the Recreational Marijuana Act, which was also, uh, adopted by the electorate, all three of them. As such, they are not perfect legislation by any means because they didn't go through the general process, but it went to a ballot initiative, and there are some limitations with each of those acts as to the ability of a community to govern, govern marijuana and their, and their respective boundaries. Uh, most problematic for our municipalities and for McComb Township as well is the initial initiative in two thousand seven, uh, for the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act because it really was restrictive on the ability of a local municipality to impose any type of restrictions, uh, zoning restrictions, regulatory, you name it. It was very explicit in its language in many ways that was interpreted by the courts, and it's been in litigation now for fifteen years, almost fourteen years, and almost, that, uh, have been interpreting this statute that was adopted by the, uh, the electorate because of the vagaries and the lack of clarity. It's been a very unfortunate and very litigious area for everyone, and, uh, but at the end of the day, i- it is legislation that we've dealt with. One of the primary issues that we deal with the Medical Marijuana Act from two thousand seven is it has language that restricts what we can do. And the courts have generally been ruling in favor of the, uh, the petitioners versus the municipalities and their restrictions. But recently, the, um, Michigan Supreme Court has come down with a decision in DeRider. I've referenced that within the ordinance itself. Uh, you'll note it in, uh, the, probably the, well, the first section with, with the intent and purpose, which was a decision that upheld the ability of communities to have some zoning regulation with regard to the caregiver operations. It does not affect the patient operations, meaning if a patient wishes to grow their twelve plants in their home, they have the absolute authority and right to do so, and we have absolutely zero control over doing so. But what we are finding in our community and where I find in other communities is that you have caregivers that are taking over homes in residential neighborhoods, and, and I'm, and I'm sure in part because there's a certain deal, you know, certain degree of security and, uh, watchfulness over a neighborhood, uh, in taking these homes and making them essentially grow houses for, uh, caregivers and patients. At the end of the day, uh, I, I, you, and this is only speculation, I said it's only speculation, but when you look at the, the data with regard to the number of plants that are grown, the, the, uh, the output and the like, uh, what a caregiver would be permitted, which is up to seventy-two plants in particular facility, is far beyond what a reasonable, you know, patient caregiver relationship would, uh, need i- in, in reality. So, the reality is, we are having a problem in our neighborhoods, and, and I won't say it's just, and it's not in our neighborhoods only, it's everywhere, and some more than others, with these grow operations that are coming in, taking over a house, and starting to grow their seventy-two plants, basically from a caregiver. Um, with the DeRider decision, and I'm going to be, uh, frank about it, there's pending appeals on some other issues and some other cases that may end up having to change this going forward, uh, that have yet, have not yet been resolved. But given the language, language and the ruling in DeRider, we have presented to you an ordinance which, although it says in very broad terms that you can zone it in some, in some respects, we've limited it as much as we possibly can to try to eliminate what we perceive is a, uh, a problem within our residential areas and, um, you know, and, and focusing on those residential areas, because that's where we're getting the complaints. We're getting the complaints from our neighbors complaining about the odors or complaining about, uh, the various aspects and after effects of grow operation in a house in a residential neighborhood. So, that's the purpose of this ordinance. Um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. It doesn't address the Michigan Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. We have, uh, taken a position as a township that we are not interested in that. Uh, likewise, we have opted out of recreational marijuana, and those are two separate and distinct things from this particular, uh, act, which has traditionally been against any, uh, regulation by municipalities. But I think that, uh, uh, given the recent ruling about Supreme Court and what I expect to be the future rulings and the cases that will be pending before the Court of Appeals as well as the Supreme Court, that they are going to give us some limited basis on a zoning basis to, um, to, to restrict where these caregiver operations in particular are, are located. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, you know, I understand, you know, the ordinance is comprehensive, and I, I wish I could make it, uh, more succinct, but the reality of it is, is this is an industry that the T's got to be crossed and the I's got to be dotted because it's fraught with litigation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rolando. Then I'll put it up to commissioners.
That was Mr. Tomlinson.
Oh, Mr. Tomlinson, sorry.
But you know, with all due respect, I'll let Tim handle it.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Tomlinson.
No worries.
Chairman, I, I had some questions if the, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Uh, Mr. Tomlinson, thanks for the, thanks for the overview on it. Um, you know, we've been reading about the marijuana stuff for a while, and we haven't seen it much at the planning commission, but obviously, it's been a, a knotty issue as, as you, uh, as you mentioned. I appreciate you and, and I think the supervisors on here taking, uh, active steps to, um, determine what our path is as opposed to maybe a more, um, passive approach. So, I, I think that's a good thing, making sure we're, we're getting on board with, uh, with, with following stuff through. Um, I have some, some wider thoughts on this that I don't know that I really want to go through tonight, um, other than to say, I think that the overall, what we're doing here makes sense to me, and I feel like some of the overall thoughts maybe aren't best addressed tonight, but are better as a, a follow-up review once we have gotten our initial iteration, if you will, in place. So, um, I have some thoughts that hopefully we can go over at a future time, but with regards to this, i- it seems to me this is better, uh, let's make sure that we have the right thing in place and, and tweak it if we need to. So, I have other stuff that I'd like to mention later, um, that I won't at the moment. But I did specifically have questions, and this might be me not understanding something correctly, but, um, specifically with regards to the individual portion of this as opposed to the caregiver portion. Uh, so, two things. One, as a general thing, um, you refer in most of these places to registered qualifying patients or any individual over the age of twenty-one. And it seemed like, a- as you mentioned, this seems to be very quiet to the recreational portion of this and that, but that seemed like it was pointing at it, and I was puzzled, why? Is there a reason why we, we spell those out or why we don't just put that in the definitions? Like, why are we specifically calling it? I assume there was a reason, I just wasn't following what it was.
But so, the reason is, is because under MRTMA, which is the recreational, we also are limited in our capacity to regulate them, and so, we tried to be more encompassing in this ordinance, even though we're still focused on the medical marijuana and caregiver portion of it. We did include that because i- i- there's somewhat of a crossover with regard to the patient and the individual under MRTMA and their ability to grow marijuana within their own personal home. And, uh, that's why we included it, and it's a good question because it's one that, uh, we've, I've grappled with a little bit, quite frankly, and, uh, I, I thought it best to make sure it was clarified in here. So, if the question comes up, which inevitably it will, I wanted to make sure it was addressed in some fashion.
So, you just want to make sure it was spelled out in every case so that it was unequivocal as to what you're referring to?
As much as I possibly could.
Okay, um, and then the second question is with regards to section ten point two six oh nine one B, which is specifically, um, you're referring to zoning for, I believe, the individual as opposed to the caregiver, if I'm reading this correctly.
Hundred percent correct.
Um, and you mentioned that we really can't restrict the zoning areas for the individual, and yet, in here, you're mentioning residential zone parcels and industrial zone parcels. Obviously, your definition of, um, uh, I forget, the facility is broad enough that I assume that could be used in any, uh, zoning district because it was a, you know, could put a car in a commercial area, whatever else. I'm just curious, why, if, if we are not able to handle the zoning, why that is in there? Is it, is it supposed to say, show that it's broad or, or what, I guess what's its purpose?
And you're talking about, uh, one B, let me read it real quick. Well, I can see your question on that, quite frankly, um, because it seems that it should be, uh, not specific to any particular zone parcel. So, that may be something that we may want to look at because I think the idea with that was they can do it, it basically in any res- in, in any zone parcel regardless if it's residential or industrial. So, uh, let me, that's something that, you know, in, in the event the planning commission recommends, uh, I would say it's subject to approve, you know, wh- whatever the recommendation may be, but, uh, review of, uh, two six oh nine one B because that may be something that needs to be tweaked.
Okay, very good.
But thank you, Mr. Tuckfield.
No problem, and, and like I said, I think I had some other things that were along this lines elsewhere, but I, just my reading of it, my interpretation was that they didn't change the, the general meaning of it. So, again, I think it's good that we get something in place. It is an issue, we know it's an issue. Um, and, and hopefully, we could, there's, there'll be time at a future date to review some of these things that maybe are more, um, flow or, or, or caposition, which, yeah, I'm, just wanted to make sure I mentioned that, and that's all my questions, and thank you, appreciate you coming in. Good to see you. Sorry, I can't see, well, actually, you're not in person either tonight. So, I was going to say, sorry, I can't see you in person, but I guess that's a moot point.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject for a minute, this is Supervisor Viviano.
Go ahead, Mr. Viviano.
Um, I, what, I might answer a couple of Aaron's questions inadvertently here, but, um, I wanted to tack on just a little bit to what Tim had already said, uh, and sort of explain, uh, a couple of things about why this ordinance was developed the way it was. Uh, I, it's no secret around town hall that I was the, uh, I was the spearhead behind this, something I intended to do from the moment I got into office. Uh, throughout the course of the last few months, as we've been dealing with this internally, one of the things I realized is, uh, that we cannot ultimately reverse or change state law. And it's not within our purview, and nor is it something I want to even attempt to do. This particular ordinance, I've gone out of my way to make no, uh, no value judgments on the use of marijuana, uh, whether someone should, should or should not grow it. It is very limited in scope to only residential neighborhoods and only those instances where someone is growing more than twelve plants. And we ta- we tailored it that narrowly to avoid the idea that we are trying to circumvent the law as passed by the people of Michigan. So, yes, we, we purposefully allowed patients to grow up to their twelve plants. Uh, we believe it is, anything above that is akin to a commercial operation and therefore should not be done in a residential neighborhood, a residentially zoned property. Anybody who wishes to could still go into other zoned properties. That's within their right and their ability to do so. So, everything Mr. Tomlinson expressed is, is a result of months of investigation and research, and I appreciate everything he's put into it to make sure that we are following a proper legal path. Uh, other communities are using this same approach, uh, to, to, to some, to some deal of success, and I plan on mirroring that, and, um, I don't mind being aggressive, but I, I was very clear with Tim while we went through this. I still want to be able to withstand challenge should it come, and I think we've done that with this ordinance. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just briefly, I, I just want to mention, um, Frank, I think all of us here really appreciate that. I know I certainly do. I talked to you, uh, you know, sometime in between, uh, when, when you were, uh, you know, between August and November, and you'd indicated this was something that you wanted to, to look into and make sure we were in good shape with. And I, I think it's obvious reading the stance that you're taking, which I know I appreciate. We don't want to do something that's out of line with, with the, the law. We want to make sure that, that we're, uh, we're protecting our citizens and, and yeah, I, I think it's on, uh, it's obvious when you read this, and I, I appreciate the work you guys have put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viviano. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Spatafora, did you have a comment?
Um, I did, but Mr. Viviano clarified the questions that I had, so thank you, I have nothing.
Okay. I think we need to open this to the public. Is that correct, Mr. Box?
That's correct.
So, at six fifty-four, we will go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Anyone who wishes to speak can, uh, start right on the phone or, or virtually raise your hand in the Zoom app? I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and, let's give it a moment, though. This is, this is all still new to the folks.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question for clarification?
Absolutely, Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
So, initially, um, in section ten, uh, point two six zero seven, intent and purpose, it talks about the, uh, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, and it says, uh, that both patients and their caregivers are allowed to cultivate medical marijuana. Um, my question is caregivers, um, is a grower a caregiver by definition? Or is a caregiver a doctor, nurse, um, what have you? Have, has that been a, a grower of marijuana, uh, a supplier of marijuana considered now a caregiver? Because, um, they're the only ones along with patients that can apparently cultivate medical marijuana? Yes? Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So, uh, Mr. Bentley, so, good question. And in the context of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, the one we're dealing with here, the caregiver is the person that is typically the grower and the one that is providing the, the medical marijuana to the individual. Um, in the context of some of the other acts, the MMFLA and MRTMA, grower is specifically defined, okay? So, this is specific only to that medical marijuana. So, it, it's very specific, and it relates only to that scenario, not the other scenario. You know, under, under the MMFLA and the, and, and the recreational marijuana, grower is a total different ballgame.
So, if I, this is Supervisor Viviano again. I, I'd like to tack on one more thing to what Mr. Tomlinson just said. Um, just for clarification for the board, uh, under the MMA, a patient is also a grower, and then if they're licensed by the state of Michigan, um, a patient can grow up to twelve plants. Often, a patient goes on to become a licensed caregiver under the MMA so that they can grow an additional sixty plants, which would be, in theory, for five other patients. So, which is how we get up to seventy-two plants in some cases in some of these homes when they're growing under the MMA. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Ju- just clarification.
Mr. Oliver?
With, with this new ordinance, in a residential area, we, homes next to homes will only be able, at maximum, grow twelve plants. Is that correct?
That is, that is true with, uh, going forward. So, those that are already established under the zoning ordinance, uh, will be considered non-conforming use. With that said, for the board, will also be an amendment to our international fire code that will, uh, regulate these type of operations for existing caregivers within our neighborhoods. Is it going to be foolproof? Are we going to be able to eliminate these? One hundred percent, no. Uh, however, it's a step in the right direction because we believe a lot of these are far beyond the capabilities from an electrical and a fire safety standpoint that, uh, will have to, uh, are going to have to come to the table. And, uh, we're, 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 we're taking a, uh, somewhat of a two-pronged approach on this. We're taking it from the zoning perspective, but we're also looking at it from the safety perspective and, uh, uh, really trying to make sure that if this is going to happen in our neighborhoods, it's as safe as possible for both the residents and those that are living in these homes. Because, quite frankly, you'll see some of these that are in, uh, homes that are occupied.
So, just, Mr. Thomas, one quick question. So, somebody comes in and says they want to build, they want to build a facility in a commercial area and grow a thousand plants, just don't eliminate any of that?
Well, uh, number one, so, someone who wanted to grow a thousand plants under the MMA, the two thousand seven law could never do that because that doesn't permit it. There are, i- i- a caregiver is limited to seventy-two plants, tops, okay? We've already eliminated medical marijuana, uh, uh, grow operations under the Facilities Licensing Act as well as under the Recreational Act. So, anybody coming in with a request to grow more than seventy-two plants as an individual caregiver, uh, in a commercial or a industrial zone, uh, would have to substantiate that it's been, I guess the best way to put it is that there are individual caregivers in that particular facility that could only have responsibility or over seventy-two plants in a closed lock facility. So, for instance, let me give an example. I've got a thousand square foot place, and I've got two caregivers. They each have five patients of their own, so they're entitled to seventy-two plants each, so long as it was divided in such a fashion that they didn't have a, access to each other and it's in a closed lock facility that's only accessible to them. They could do it under one roof, but they're going to have to have the licenses and the patients for each one of those particular sections, I guess, of that particular building under one roof. And i- i- and eventually, quite frankly, with the way the law is going on this, hopefully, um, the state wants their money, and we all want to tax dollars from this. If we're going to go down this road, and eventually, you're going to see a situation where a lot of, lot, eventually, it's going to be eliminated and be very. and be very commercialized and not so scattered amongst neighborhoods and the like. You're still going to have people that want to grow their own and do their own thing. But at the end of the day, you're really trying to get rid of the grow-ups in the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. We haven't closed the public portion. Is there anyone else that would like, or is there anyone that would like to speak in public?
I'm still not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. At 7:02 PM, we will close the public portion. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Public portion is now closed. Do we have a motion with this zoning ordinance? Anyone?
I'll make the motion based on the comments from Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Viviano, and as stated before us, I'll make the motion to adopt and per the record, publish the Macomb Township ordinance to amend Macomb Township zoning ordinance by adding Article Roman numeral number 27, Medical Marijuana to Regulate Patient Caregiver Activities Pursuant to the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, to provide for repealer severability and the effective date for township requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I think here I got to back up a minute. You needed a motion to close the public portion.
We did that.
We did that.
Yeah.
You took a vote. We took a vote. We didn't make a motion. No.
Oh, we didn't?
Yeah, I realize that. I'll move on then, if somebody wants.
Okay. Do we do a motion to close the public portion?
No, we actually.
We actually.
We stand.
We missed it again?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's back up.
All right.
And then we don't need you to repeat. We'll just go from there.
I'll move to close the public portion.
Okay. Motion to close by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bentley. Call the roll, please, at 7:04. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
All right. Now the public portion is closed. And now Mr. Spatafora has made a motion.
I'll support that motion.
Okay. And Mr. Oliver is in support. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief discussion on that. Mr. Tomlinson, did you still think it was, after Mr. Viviano's comments, I know he's sort of addressed it, but I'm not sure if you still wanted us to do this subject to review on 10.2609-1B?
So, so if you want to, if you want to, the motion could be this, is the motion could be to recommend approval to the township board of the ordinance as presented, subject to modification of 2609 lowercase b in parentheses, to eliminate the phrase "on a residentially zoned parcel or otherwise authorized for residential use" and "on an industrial zoned parcel." If we eliminate that one little caveat, I think that it meets the discussion we had, Mr. Tuckfield.
Just as long as, I was pretty sure that still stood after Mr. Viviano's comment, but I just, yeah, want to make sure I was correct in my notes on that.
So if Mr. Spatafora would agree to that amendment, that would be great.
I'll clarify my motion per Mr. Tomlinson's comments on Section 10.2609-1B, eliminating that language within that paragraph.
And that it's a recommendation.
For a recommendation to the township board.
Right. And you're going to continue to second? Okay. Let's call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Next item. General Design Concept Fremont PUD Permanent Parcel 083510004, Located on the Southeast Corner of 21 Mile and Carr Road, Section 35, MM21 Carr LLC Petitioner, Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. I am going to share my screen here. There, one second. Everyone can see that now. So as you mentioned, this is Fremont PUD. This is the second time it's a part of you. You've already reviewed the concept plan. This is the general design plan. You see that the site is Carr Road and 21 Mile Road. Currently, this property is zoned C3 commercial, which would allow a wide variety of uses. The petitioner, who I can see is on the call tonight, is proposing a mixed-use set of items. And as you see here now on the screen, some residential use, buffering between the existing residential and future commercial use, which would include potentially two drive-through restaurants, as well as a drive-through car wash, a gas station, and a credit union or bank. Again, this, the entire property is currently zoned commercial. So it is nice that they're providing a buffer from the existing residential properties adjacent to this. Provides that separation, and those folks who would buy into their proposed residential would know that going in that they're going to be living next to commercial operations. That being said, there's a number of comments from internal departments provided to the petitioner. Engineering in particular has a fairly lengthy list of items that they would like to see addressed. As far as planning department, one of our biggest items was, we don't typically address traffic in the township because they're not our roadways and the county approves or disapproves of driveway entrances. But we did suggest maybe looking at a traffic study of sorts. In those discussions with the traffic engineer, with the petitioner, one of the things that's come up relatively recently, as you see on the screen, on the 21 Mile Road portion, they have a driveway for the residential piece of the development, and then two separate driveways, one for the gas station area and in between the gas station area and the car wash, and then one near the easternmost drive-through restaurant. It sounds like the county road department is maybe pushing back a little on having two entrances there. If they were to go down to one, I think we all agree that the one directly across from the residential community across 21 Mile would be the ideal one. But more practically, not having two would make it very difficult for internal circulation with all of these drive-throughs to really come through properly. That being said, I think the location of the driveways is still something that's somewhat up in the air and may change in the future. Back in front of you. I wait and probably several other changes to the site in order to make the circulation work well. I do, so again, I see Mr. Izzy is on tonight. I'm sure he would like to discuss this as well.
Mr. Izzy, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity. As Mr. Box had mentioned, there's a number of comments from both planning and from engineering. And a couple of the comments, what we'd like to do, because of the nature of the PUD, it is kind of a give and take between the planning department, Planning Commission, and the developer. I can go through those couple of items that are, that are that are on the engineering comments and the planning comments. And I could speak more specific to the curb cut issue that we're in the middle of with the road commission. I think ultimately, we'll get what you see in front of you tonight, the two curb cuts. But with COVID, with spring break, people be on vacation. Some people are working remotely. It's been very difficult in front of the road commission to have those conversations. So back to the traffic study. The traffic study is in process. We're making some assumptions based on uses that are no more intense than what the underlying zoning allows. We are basing the traffic study based on the current curb cuts and the current uses as proposed. One other item, and I just want to throw this out there. Commercial PUD is, it's a difficult project to do. It's difficult for you as the township, so I appreciate the dilemma that you have in front of you. But us as a developer as well, we need something to market. We've done a similar type development at the corner of 26 Mile Road and Van Dyke in Shelby Township. And I can assure you that we started with a preliminary conceptual site plan, such as you see before you. And the commercial changed and evolved as the users, as the tenants, whether they were long-term tenants or whether they were purchasers. And those uses came in front of us. And we had to work through the deals. We had to go back in front of Planning Commission. So you have a lot of control when it comes to this commercial PUD. And we're willing to massage and rework the development agreement, the PUD agreement, as these users potentially change, depending on the economy, the market. So that's just kind of the nature of the commercial PUD. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Other than that, and I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, we'd like to at least get some sort of a conceptual approval or green light to go forward with what we're trying to market with the commercial. I think the residential, I don't see that there's a lot of issues on the residential. Couple of engineering items, again, that I can speak specifically to, like the sidewalks. But we need inventory, and we'd like to be able to submit engineering for that residential, for those duplexes. But I do understand the Planning Commission has to look at the overall development. So with that, either Mr. Box or Mr. Skirdel, if we want to go through your comments. By the way, if I forgot, Mario Izzy with MJC Companies, 46600, Romeo Plank, Macomb Township. Thank you.
Commissioners, put it up to the committee.
Chairman? Yeah, Mr. Box faded out right at the end of his recommendation, Josh. I couldn't hear what your recommendation was, probably the last five or six sentences before Mr. Izzy spoke. Could you, could you repeat those or just the general gist of what your recommendation is here?
Sure. So largely, the recommendation are for them to resolve the issues that are in the review letters. I don't think there's anything necessarily earth-shattering in those things that need to be addressed. As Mr. Izzy mentioned, I think those can be handled relatively easily. Our primary concern is, again, with the curb cuts, and how many times are we going to have to change and re-change? I will point out the, you know, he mentioned the development at 26 and Van Dyke, and that to my understanding, did go through a number of iterations of changes as they went through the process. Also, the property on the opposite side of Carr Road from this one is essentially a mirror image. Maybe, you know, not quite as intense, only has one drive-through, I believe, in the bank. But it is a mirror image, so I understand what they're going for. We've had a number of, as he said, they're looking for something to market here. We've had a number of inquiries about the gas station calling into the planning department. So clearly, you know, that they are looking to move this forward, and I certainly understand that. We've also had some folks come in interested in the car wash piece, where they mentioned what's shown on his plans for their style, our wash would not fit there. They would maybe need to take two of those lots. So it's a process that's going to evolve as we move forward. I totally agree with Mr. Izzy that I think the residential piece is very much ready to go. I have no concerns really with that. Some minor things from engineering about the sidewalks. Again, our major concern is the curb cut and where those drive aisles are going to end up. Okay.
And just to make sure that I'm understanding it, so your recommendation at this point is to, is to wait until that has been resolved? Is that, is that accurate?
I would say yes and no. I think it may not be a bad thing to wait until that's resolved, but I don't think it's also going to really be a deal breaker if they move forward as is now and do have to come back another time. I know, you know, some of us have spoken previously, and I think in the past several hours, looking further in this, and in particular in the development at 26 and Van Dyke, I think some of my concerns about, you know, potentially tabling this item have lessened to a certain extent. I do think, again, it's very, very likely this will be back in front of you again with some modifications. But I think even if we tabled it, it's going to come back in front of you again anyways. So I guess that would be my recommendation, yeah, that I'm not necessarily opposed to moving forward, despite the concern with the curb cuts.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora.
I would like to ask Mr. Skirdel, from the date of your review letter as the planning consultant, February 22nd, has the petitioner addressed a number of these issues that you outlined in your recommendations at this point, which was, you know, a month and a half or so ago?
Not, we haven't, this is the latest review based on the latest plan that's been submitted, that's been given to us.
In the interests of all parties concerned and with good government and good development, would you, Mr. Box, or you, Mr. Skirdel, be necessarily opposed of perhaps moving forward, and I speak on this with personal experience as well with this type of thing where, because I do like the residential layout as a buffer with residential duplex units, which is a nice buffer. But as far as the commercial piece, having the petitioner come back with more of a detailed site plan as he has potential users within that particular area to come back before the Planning Commission and present, but in the meantime, allow the petitioner to go forward to see if they can market that commercial piece for potential commercial users? That's a roundabout way of saying where can go forward with the condition that, you know, the petitioner would have to come back with a, obviously, a detail, I want to say a detailed site plan because it would require an amendment to the planned unit development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like the planning commissioners to maybe perhaps give some thought to that concept while the petitioner, you know, awaits the traffic study and addresses other concerns that are normally involved with engineering permitting and things like that, since by itself and its nature, a planned unit development is a unique thing, which is to benefit the community. It benefits, obviously, the developer. It benefits, I think, the residents all the way around, at least from my standpoint. So I don't know if any other commissioners have any discussion on that?
I could summarize our comments.
Sure.
Overall, with the residential, we had no problem with the residential. I think it meets everything. Here's some real, you know, some lights, heights and things, but we're talking a couple of feet here and there. With the commercial piece, there is another layer of design. Not only the PUD, what it does is we look at parking, but we want to make sure whatever use is going in there, that they generally can fit the parking in there. There was enough room to put a landscape bed, but they, when a specific use comes in, they still have to come back to the Planning Commission for a detailed site plan where we count the number of shrubs, the number of trees. We actually count the number of parking spaces. Right now, we're just trying to get a feel for, someone's not putting like a really large 100,000 square foot building in there and they leave room for 10 parking spaces. I mean, a seashore, but but as long as they get somewhat close, we think it's realistic. That's our trigger to go forward with this. But again, the marketing will happen. Josh is correct. We receive calls, quite a few calls, with people with different ideas and already what they want to develop, what they don't want to develop. And it always has to come back to you. There is a developer agreement. At the end of the day, that developer agreement has to match what's on the plan. So every time there's a change or a new item happens, they will be back in front of this commission. If that helps out.
And the example I'll use is the two drive-through restaurants on the site plan as they're shown. They're essentially identical. They're essentially identical layouts. I'm sure you've all been to fast food restaurants, whether it's McDonald's or Burger King or Taco Bell. They don't all have the exact same footprint. They're not going to come and build their restaurant to his footprint. That's not how it works. They're going to come with their own footprint. And they're going to have to have their detailed site plan for each individual one of those when we get to that point. If, if it drastically changes the overall site plan, you know, that's when you're going to see Mr. Izzy back in front of you with an update on his, his site plan for the new unit.
Okay. There are, I would.
Oh, a question on that, so. It, it seems like the board and, and the planning's comfortable with the residential.
Correct.
But if that moves forward before the commercial gets done, aren't we going to be in the same problem with people living there in, in that, in, in not expecting commercials to be there?
I, I wouldn't think so. I guess it depends on how they market the residential. I can't imagine they're going to sell these condos telling people, no, there's never going to be commercial there. They're going to, they're going to take several months, you know, maybe a year to build all of these. By then, there'll be movement on the commercial piece. So any intelligent home buyer should do their homework and realize what's going to be built in the vacant lot right next door.
Sometimes we miss that.
I, they have provided a, a wall and a adequate buffering between the new residential, not the existing residential, but the layer of new residential and the commercial. They also have some intention-based consults. Other than maybe some mid-dimensional things, I think they're on the right path to creating the proper buffering between the two. What we will look at is the lighting and noise levels.
So, so you're going to, let's just say the commercial got built. I mean, the residential got built. There's going to be adequate buffering anyways.
Yes, we're going to make sure of that.
And this commercial could even change six weeks from now.
Correct.
But you are comfortable with the residential.
Yes, yes.
It's the curb cuts that.
Yep.
Ultimately is going to get decided by the road commission anyways.
Curb cuts, internal circulation and adequate parking. But no one's going to get through unless they have the new organs.
So you, you would, in my hearing, you would be comfortable with it moving forward? Okay. All right, thank you.
Quick question, is the commercial, I'm sorry, the residential Phase 1 of this project?
It is 1A, and the gas station is Phase 1B, as it's already shown.
Mr. Bentley.
So as I understand it, we are looking at the general design concept. Similar to the first time we looked at this, but we have more detail to look at.
Yes.
So the concept being residential, commercial. We, we can, are we recommending or are we approving to the board?
This is a, I think the recommendation to the board, board meeting, finally, is from coming to the final site plan, to a developer view, then when like, so we will, the design plan is all approved by the board, then it becomes a, just a site plan matter in front of the planning commission. I'll reject that for you, but typically that's how they work by state law.
And how much change if we approve this concept? How much change to the commercial is allowed? Because you have a variety of commercial businesses that could go in this. Are we, are we pretty much saying that we need this, this mix? Just not, you know, two restaurants could be one. But we're, we're, we're requiring that it be this mix? Because the area can support a car wash, another restaurant or two, a bank and, and such. Is that our review or is that, is, can that be changed later on?
Can it be changed later on? What you're going to do in terms of the concept plan, you're looking at concept plan issues. Two restaurants, a car wash, a corner gas station, convenience store and a credit. If that's part of the developer agreement, once that starts changing, that old developer agreement has to come back to, to this commission and back to the board to be changed. So every time there's a change based on the concept, then it's kind of like, this is a complicated one. It's like going in a funnel or slowly getting down. This day and age with retail trends, marketing trends and things, things change so rapidly that we almost have to keep these rolling and then just keep bringing them back. I believe Mr. Izzy understands that and was agreeable to that.
If I can, if I can add to that? May I speak? Thank you for the opportunity. Great question, Mr. Bentley, and I can give you a flavor of, of what we're, what kind of questions and what kind of inquiries we're getting from potential tenants and buyers right now. So the site plan in front of you, there's a gas station on the corner. We've had a, another gas station operator inquire about putting a drive-through on that building. And a traffic study would have to support that. The gas station that they want to put in has one more pump station, for instance. So that's another site plan detail that would have to come in front of the planning commission for your approval. Mr. Box had mentioned about the two drive-through end buildings, building C and building D. You may, you may ultimately see one larger restaurant pad with one drive-through that they'll buy both of those two pads from us. So that's another variation. Another variation, we, we have a Valvoline oil change that's looking at locating here in lieu of where the car wash is currently proposed. So we would move the potential car wash to where potentially the credit union is, what's in front of you. So the point of what I'm trying to get at is this is constantly changing marketing dilemma until somebody's ready to, to close on a deal. And, and we may, we may be in front of you holding a tenant's hand to get a site plan detailed approved, and they may not close. So then we have to come back to you again. And it's just the unfortunate nature of the economy that we're currently in, the pandemic. Commercial has changed drastically in the last 12 months. We have tenants that are looking for less square footage, but they're really banking on these, these drive-throughs and drive-up delivery in order to be able to sustain their business. So I'm glad you asked the question. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a detailed answer, flavor of, of what we're seeing day by day from our, from our, our brokers and our realtors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bentley, any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Or Doug Field.
Just a question to Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo. I think this is along the lines of Mr. Bentley's question, but I, and I, I should remember these steps better. So the first time we saw this, and I, I don't recall the exact terminology, but it's a general concept review. This is more of a design concept. We're getting more details. Mr. Izzy is, is mentioning that he needs to be able to market it, and I, and I get that. I think I recognize the problem as, as, as stated. What I don't understand is this is not the final. What are we giving at this point? Different than what we have already stated, that we're comfortable with the general concept that helps the marketing portion of it and, and makes it go forward? Like what are we, what are we doing here that makes a difference that can't be waited on?
Now, let me try to answer that question. The concept plan was simply, you looked at land use and you're okay with commercial going on the corner and residential wrapped around. Some level of density, the things were presented to you at that point. You said the commission and the board says, no, we're comfortable with this. It's, we like the idea of buffering of the residential layering to a commercial. Now we're at the point where we're looking at a plan where they're showing five commercial buildings on there. Now what you're at the point is we're starting to look at design criteria that's in the ordinance. We're trying to apply that to the concept plan. So little by little honing in on the detail and how this thing is going to form in the end. And then the final thing, the site plan, where actually we start measuring with the parking spaces, the length of parking spaces. And that's when Mr. Izzy has a tenant in hand and the tenant is sitting in front of him. Hopefully by that time, he'll be sitting in front of you at this board, you're going to go through what you do on a typical site plan. So right now, for later, we're just trying to make sure if five buildings are there, five buildings, you're the comfort level that five buildings can work conditioned on, the details still have to come in front of you.
So we're still, we're, we're still saying, we're, we're still being asked, are you still comfortable with this? We're not approving anything, but are you comfortable with this overall design? Is that, is that what we're being asked here, more or less?
Yes, you're comfortable with five buildings. If anything, it stands out, Mr. Box brought up the curb cuts we're trying to work through right now. We've looked at the screening, we had issues in terms of lighting, a lot of detailed issues. The engineer's got issues on some utilities, things like that. These are real details that you really can't even get to until you know what you have in place. And so these PVs are really difficult to work with sometimes, especially these large mixed-use ones. So here's a lot of give and take. So yeah, they have a certain comfort level of the details are becoming where you likely see direction like this involved.
Okay, and then again, I think that all my questions were along the same lines of Mr. Bentley, maybe just twisted and, and maybe I didn't understand it. So we say, we reckon, and I think this is a, a recommendation of approval. I know I was asked, but I, I never can keep it straight. So if we, if we, if we recommend approval of this tonight, and then they come back with the same design, more detailed out for the final design. How much ability to say, do we have at that point to say, oh, we see this now that we didn't see it before? We don't like that. Do we have no ability to change it at that point or is it, is it?
We got a lot of ability, because at that point, we're going to start counting the detail of the ordinance. They don't need, that's like plan review. And if they don't need the detail of the ordinance, they either got to get a variance or they walk out and have to change plans.
Don't we not have to pay nearly as much attention to the ordinance and the PUD as long as it's stated in the agreement?
There are certain waivers, but you've got, there's a certain rationality to the ordinance itself. Like you could, you can waive certain requirements based on bulk and things like that. I've got to get into your PD more in depth, but there are certain things that are prohibited. You can't waive, you can't think the other way. There's certain criteria in terms of parking and things like that. You can waive some landscape requirements, you can waive certain maneuvering areas, loading, things like that. But the, the ordinance is pretty specific on what you can get away from, what you can't.
Okay.
Up a pretty set of stuff.
Okay. I would just say generally, if Mr. Box wants us to table, I'd be fine tabling it. If he's, if, if he feels comfortable with moving forward, I'm, I'm fine moving forward. I'd say the concept, much like when we looked at it however many months ago. I think it makes sense, as other people mentioned, you know, putting in, even, even if you reference not just the fact that it's going to be put in before the commercial and so they would know that it was going to be commercial going there, just the different type of use, a duplex use as opposed to a, a a single family, it's, it's a different type of residential use. So I think I like, I like the buffering of that, and I, I still like the general layout. Getting rid of the driveway does make a difference to me. I, I would say that if it comes back with one less driveway, I'm not sure that I would have the same feeling about this that I have now. So I guess that would be to, to Mr. Izzy. If, if you want us to look at this now, yes, I, I'm comfortable with it. And, and I don't see anything on a broad basis beyond some of the details that, that the team has, has put together here. But I would just say if, if the driveways do change, it makes a difference to me. I'm not sure if it'd be enough where I would say I don't like it, but that's a significant change. I drive through that corner all the time. Obviously, our, our roads should hold the load, but it's certainly something I'd be, I'd be interested in noticing, particularly right now, as, as I'm sure some of your users notice, our fast food queue lines are, are, are double and triple and quadruple what they were designed for. And, and there's places, not as much in, in our area, but there's places I see them out onto the main road on a regular basis. And I don't know if that's going to survive beyond the pandemic, but it's certainly, it's something I think about when I see a development like this. So just from my end, I'm comfortable with it moving forward. As a side note, I wonder if we shouldn't look at handling these stages on a PUD differently when we're doing commercial and residential? If we think this may, maybe is not the most effective way. But from my end, if, if, if the, if the staff is, is comfortable moving forward, I'm still comfortable with the development. I think it's still the best use of what we've got going on there. And I'd like to see more details as we get specific users, but on a concept basis, I'm, I'm still happy with it. I think it's still a good use for that corner. So those are all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doug Field. Is there anyone else, commissioners, anyone else? Then I'd like to open it to the public at seven thirty six. Mr. Box, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Sure, if anyone from the public wishes to speak, you can virtually raise your hand through Zoom or star nine on your phone if you're just dialed in. Waiting to see if there's anyone raising their hand. I will say that there is one question in the chat here. I'm a property owner along the line of the development side. Will there be any kind of buffering or fencing up between the new residential and the existing lot line? I, I guess Mr. Izzy could probably answer that better than I can what they intend to do there.
Did you hear that, Mr. Izzy?
The question is, is there any buffering between the single, existing single family and the proposed duplex?
Correct.
Other than the, the 50-foot rear yard setback. In our proposed landscape plan, we've got several trees, rear yard landscape trees that we're proposing. We're not proposing a berm. We didn't want to burden the, you know, have to get too fancy with the drainage system and, and where does the berm shed? On which side and whose drainage, drainage district can take the berm water? Which we find ourselves in a dilemma sometimes on single-family developments. But anyway, to directly answer the question, we are proposing landscaping without a berm. There's a variety of landscape trees that are on the landscape plan that we're proposing.
There's anyone else? Make sure you give us your name and address for the record. I see somebody there that might want to talk. Anyone?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the public portion at seven thirty eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hardy made the motion. Ordered by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, go ahead, call the roll.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Doug Field?
Yes.
Mr. Spetafora? Yes.
Okay, motion passes to close the public portion. Is there a motion on the floor? Or the, the, the design concept? Anyone?
I do have a curiosity question before the motion. I guess maybe Mr. Izzy can shed some light on this. Spring Valley Drive, which is intended to cut through the residential components, is, I think, planned to be a private drive. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Spetafora, yeah, it's a, it's a private drive. We intentionally do not want to dedicate this to the Macomb County Road Commission.
I, I guess just my concern, this is maybe for a thought and a question down the line. When that intersection of 21 Mile Card gets congested, as far as through traffic as a shortcut, coming north on Card Road and shooting on over to 21 Mile going east. You know, is there, was there some thought as to that or what can be done in the future?
Right, so great question. What we are proposing with the road commission and, and part of the reason why we're trying to meet with them, we need to discuss the details of the deceleration and taper lanes, both on 21 Mile Road and on Card Road. There's going to have to be some extension, extensive lane widening that the road commission, I'm, I'm expecting they're going to require part of this development to help alleviate some of that congestion at the intersection. As far as cut through traffic on this private lane, is it going to happen? Probably, we're going to do everything we can to try to dissuade that from happening. We can post it, private road, residents only. Sometimes you have to, have, have the, you know, Macomb County Sheriff get involved from time to time. We don't want to do that, but sometimes that happens, so. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make the motion? Make a motion. Rob?
Yes. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we would
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we would, uh, move forward with this. Will this go to the board? Make a recommendation to the board and also, uh, recommend that, uh, Mr. Izzy and our planners, uh, stay close in close contact because there's still a lot of things that need to get straight around, but I'm confident that all parties involved will.
Sir.
Motion made by Mr. Oliver.
I'll support.
Mr. Bentley's going to support. And if you could call the roll, sir?
Sir, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you.
Special land use. Did I forget something? No? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Izzy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Izzy. Special land transform RX, permanent parcel zero eight, one, seven, three, four, four, zero, two, three. Located on the east side of Regency Center, Rock. North, whoop, wait a minute, yeah, north of twenty-three mile road, section seventeen, Transform RX LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you. Um, as you mentioned, this located in section seventeen of the township. Uh, the, the petitioner is seeking a special land use. Uh, this is an industrial area, uh, and there, there's special land use, uh, to utilize a facility for indoor recreation and fitness. We've seen a few of these recently. Uh, one was a indoor baseball facility in the very, very close to this area. Uh, and there was another, um, um, physical therapy type fitness facility a little bit north of here, also in the same area that had been before, um, in the past year, that's six months probably. All of our departments have, have reviewed, uh, their application. Uh, I believe everyone at this time is recommending approval. Um, we did have some initial concerns, uh, uh, in planning with parking. I think they've addressed that by providing some class schedules, uh, and such. Uh, but at this time we are all recommending approval. Uh, and it, it does, uh, look like, uh, mona is on, uh, the petitioner, if you have any questions.
Okay. The petitioner is here?
It's me right here.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Hello.
Anything you'd like to share with us? Please give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Monica Buchalato. This is my husband Fernando Gomara. He's also part owner. Our current address is one, seven, eight, seven, three, Morgantor Drive. And the address of the proposed, um, special land use permit is five, one, six, four, zero, Regency Center Drive.
Anything you'd like to share?
Um, we are, as, uh, Mr. Box said, we are an indoor recreation and fitness facility. Um, specifically strength, strength training and conditioning. But we are not a typical gym in the sense that, um, you know, like an LA Fitness or a Planet Fitness, people might come in and use the gym as they wish. There is no open gym times, um, that we are providing to our clients. So every person that walks in the door is going to be either, um, individually, individually coached, one-on-one via personal training or a small group fitness class that we cap at ten people per class. And those classes, um, run sixty minutes in totality.
Put it up to the commissioners. Bentley?
Um, there was one comment, uh, about the parking and that the, uh, classes, uh, fitness classes that they have one hour, uh, period of time between the end of one class and the start of another. Uh, in the copy that I have, which is not dated of your, um, your, your description of what is going on, uh, it still indicates that on, uh, Fridays, uh, there's, there's a class at five AM, then at six AM. And the same, uh, in the evening, five PM and six PM. Uh, will those be changed, uh, so that there is an hour in between, uh? Not that, not that they're probably in the key PM will be more of a problem, but, uh,
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that was an old copy. Um, we've changed since the, the class times to five AM, seven AM, twelve thirty PM, four PM and six PM. So we got rid of that, that five PM class.
Okay. Appreciate that.
I had no other questions. I thought it was a good proposal.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes, to the petitioner, uh, are you going to have any competitive events? Would bring a lot of people in?
No, that is not our intention. Our, um, our average member is not the competitive, um, type. So we, we target more people who are just working on their general fitness and, um, not, not looking to be competitors.
And what's the maximum capacity you could hold in that building? And you're supposed to be set up for?
That, that's hard to answer. Um, it is a, it's a seventy-eight hundred square foot building. Um, there are a couple of offices in the front. Right now, the only coach is either myself or my husband. Um, and like I said, we, we are capping the classes at ten people per class. Um, our intention is not to hold huge group classes because at, you know, past the level of ten, people are not getting that individualized, um, service that they're paying for. So, you know, our, our rates per month are a hundred and sixty-five dollars versus a Planet Fitness, which is like ten dollars per month. Um, somebody's not going to want to pay a hundred and sixty-five dollars per month, um, if they're not getting that individualized care that you would get in a ten-person class. So, um, are, are you asking, um, are we going to have more people in addition to the, to the group class?
No, basically I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a scale on, um, number one parking because it does sound like a little bit of an issue, but it seems like you resolve that. But, uh, the large amounts of people being there at one time i- in, in that facility.
Um, I, I don't anticipate there will ever be large amounts of people there, um, especially with the hour in-between class. Um, in terms of how much it can hold, the vast majority of the space itself is a, um, it's a warehouse. So it's, it's pretty large, open concept, but I don't anticipate, like I said, more than ten people per class being, being in the building. Um, so you would have the ten people if that class is full, plus one coach, um, maybe, um, a front desk person. So maybe twelve people at most at one time.
Well, again, it sounds like you, what you said, you're gearing this to specialty training. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley?
I would like to tack on to that. Uh, you said ten people max per class, but both your husband and yourself, um, are trainers. Would you have one class per individual? So you'd have twenty people, uh, in that large, uh, area at one time?
No, that's not the attention, my, um, intention. My husband's a full-time physician by, by day. So if he is coaching, it's just to alleviate me at night and only when he's off of work.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Spatafora, anything?
No comments.
Mr. Dougfield, anything? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public at seven fifty PM.
Not sure if we have any public left.
It does not appear that there's any public left.
Well, I mean, I think I have to do it anyway.
Right.
Okay. So there's no one that would like to speak? So we'll close the public portion at seven fifty.
I'll make the motion.
With the motions, thank you, Mr. Oliver. And like the second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes? And Mr. Hardy?
Yes. All right. Thank you, guys, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
We need a motion.
Need a motion.
So, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
We just closed the public. Just too much. We just closed the public portion.
If there's, if there's no further comments or additions, corrections, deletions, uh, based on the comments from our, uh, planning director and the department reviews, I will make a motion to approve the special land use for Transform RX, uh, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. And seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Bentley, yes?
All right. Thank you, guys, and good luck. And hopefully I'll get this right Sunday.
Yeah.
Uh, we are sixteen. D. Final plan, Regency Commerce Center, Unit Nine. Permanent parcel zero eight, one, seven, three, four, four, one, zero, nine, located on the west side of Regency Center, north of twenty-three mile road, section seventeen, Scott Blaca petitioner. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. Uh, this is actually located just on the street from, uh, the town hall that you discussed. Uh, this is another industrial, uh, building. Uh, the owner, uh, has, uh, the building in unit ten as well. And this is essentially a mirror image of that unit that they're, they're looking to, uh, develop here. I don't believe that there were any objections, uh, from our internal departments. And it looks like, uh, Mr. Thompson is on, if he wanted to, uh, make any comments about.
Mr. Thompson, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you have any, anything you'd like to share?
Uh, my name is Bill Thompson from Leader Associates, uh, representing, uh, Mr. Mulcahy this, this, this evening. Uh, Mr. Mulcahy developed lot ten, or unit ten over the last year, year and a half. And apparently there's been enough interest in unit ten that he bought unit nine and he wants to duplicate that building, uh, using a mirror image. I think the only thing he's changing between the two buildings is a little bit on the inside. Parking will stay the same. So basically this is the same building that you approved two years ago, uh, just a mirror image. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Can you please, uh, give us your address for the record too, please?
One, seven, zero, zero, one, nineteen mile road, suite three, Clinton Township, four, eight, oh, three, eight.
Thank you, sir. Let's open it to the commissioners. Anybody? Anybody have anything they'd like to share? Any questions? Okay.
Oh, there was a question.
Mr. Bentley?
Um, Mr. Thompson, uh, I, I know, uh, this is, uh, uh, this is a duplication, uh, or I should say a mirror image of the unit ten, uh, adjacent. Uh, my question though is, is, and because probably due to my computer or whatever, but, uh, when I pulled up the, uh, the drawings and got close enough to read it, they were blurry, so I couldn't tell. But is there any, uh, connection between, uh, the drive behind the unit and the adjacent, um, drives for adjacent units? Or are they completely separate?
There is no connection. They are totally independent.
Okay. Um, I couldn't tell because when I, when I looked at some of the, uh, the truck, uh, turnarounds and stuff, and I don't even know that there's going to be truck in this operation, but it, it just seemed like they'd almost have to back in, or mean back out as opposed to turn around. Um, or drive through to the next unit. So, um, from what I'm understanding, they, they can turn around. So it's not large trucks, tray, truck and trailer then?
Correct. There is sufficient room for, for the, uh, the vehicles to turn around.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? All right. At this time, I guess I'm going to practice a little bit and open it to the public at seven fifty-six.
I'll make that motion to open the public hearing.
What's that?
You make that motion to open the public hearing?
Well, we make the motion to close the public.
Oh, we were open already? My bad. Excuse me.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
No, no, we haven't opened it. I'm opening it now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I know, I know. I'm sorry. We're making, we're opening the public hearing at seven fifty-six. Mr. Box, is there anyone that would like to speak?
I'm not seeing any public, uh, in the attendee list at this time.
All right. I'd like to close the public portion at seven fifty-seven. Is there a motion?
I'll make motion of that.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes? Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
All right. Motion. Close the public hearing passes. Now, do we have a motion for, uh, item D? Regency Commerce Center, Unit Nine.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion on this item.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Dougfield?
Uh, uh, sorry, I was just, I just want to make sure I had, uh, the space there. Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the final plan, uh, for Regency Center Commercial, uh, for Regency Commerce Center, Unit Nine, permanent parcel zero eight, one, seven, three, four, four, one, oh, nine, uh, pursuant to the recommendations that it matched all appropriate, uh, measurements, uh, and ordinances, and that it's something we have already approved, uh, in the past and is being built in a, in an acceptable manner.
Thank you, Mr. Dougfield. Anyone want to second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Oh, and I, I was, yes.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. Next item, rezoning request. Agricultural AG Residential, One Family, One Family Urban R1. Permanent parcel zero eight, one, six, two, zero, 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 seven. Located on the south side of twenty-four mile road, west of Foss Road, section sixteen, Salvador Mercio petitioner. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chairman Hardy. I'm going to share my screen one last time here. Let's see this now. Uh, the, the property we're discussing here, the parcel is, as you mentioned, south of twenty-four, a little bit west of Foss Road. See highlighted here that this, this parcel, uh, is master planned currently for three units per acre, which matches up with our R1, uh, residential urban one in the district, which is what they're seeking. Um, all of our departments have gone through and, and have no objections to this rezoning request. And we are all in favor of doing so.
Okay. Mr. Demercio, are you present, petitioner?
This is Bill Thompson again. I'm speaking on behalf of San Dimencurio. My address is one, seven, zero, zero, one, nineteen mile road, suite three, Clinton Township, four, eight, oh, four, three, or four, four, eight, oh, three, eight. I'm sorry. Um, as Mr. Box said, this property is located on the south side of twenty-four, west of Foss Road. The, uh, westerly boundary is the McBride drain. Uh, the back half of this property is adjacent to the old landfill. We're asking for the, uh, single family zoning on the property in conformance with the master plan. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
I, I got one from Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Oliver?
Uh, which way, where are the sewers going to come from there on, on that property?
The sewers are coming, will be coming from the west.
Go and, and head east to that, to that parcel?
Excuse me?
The, the, they're going to head east from, uh, okay, I, I see how that's going to fall now. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else? Bentley, Mr. Duckfield. Okay. All right, then I will open this to the public at eight, oh, one. Mr. Ben, or Mr. Bentley, Mr. Box, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Uh, there are still no public attendees at this time.
Okay. Yes, I believe there were two letters that we want to put in record. Is that correct? Were they for this? Because they were at the top of our packet, but they were for this item, I believe. And an email, was the email also part of this?
So the, the, uh, emails that I sent you in the past day were with regards to the Fremont.
Okay.
Right. I'm not sure what other ones were in the packet.
Is there a couple of letters?
It was, you know, the very first letter in the packet.
Mr. Bentley, those letters in the packet were, were the ones that were right behind the meeting minutes? Oh, yes. I read those, tried the same question you did. Those were attached from last meeting where they had the rezoning was going on, on.
Romeo Plain. Those are part of the meeting minutes from last.
Yeah, pardon me. I had the same question. I had the same thing. I went on.
I thought so, too, but for some reason, I didn't remember that particular letter.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't remember.
Um.
Yeah.
So that's why I mentioned, let me get to it, because it, he, I thought he described this area.
Mr. Bentley, I think, I think we may have seen that letter the day of the meeting with the, with the signature. I think that was something we saw, saw live. It's possibly that we didn't handle it, hand it all the way around the table or around the desk.
Okay. All right.
All right. Well, let's close the public portion at eight, oh, three. Pardon me. And do we have a motion to do that somehow? Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Support by Duckfield.
Supported by, by Mr. Duckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
I wasn't paying attention. Excuse me. Um, I may check this out. Mr. Dennis Patterson. This is regarding the, all that was Fremont. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, so motion was made by?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. For the public portion.
Yes. Okay, and support?
It's by Mr. Duckfield.
Thank you. I apologize. So, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield.
Yes.
Bentley, yes. And Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
And Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes to close the public portion. Do we have a motion for the rezoning? Anyone?
Based on the comments from our planning director and the internal departmental review, I will make motion to recommend approval of rezoning request from Agricultural A G to Residential One Family Urban R One for parcel number zero eight, sixteen, two hundred, double, zero, seven, as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Spatafora. Supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Tom. All right, extension of time. Site plan, Rockwood Park. Permanent parcel zero eight, two, eight, three, seven, six, zero, zero, two, located on the north side of twenty-one mile road, quarter mile east of Romeo Plain, section twenty-eight. Uh, Chiattano. I'm gonna, Chiattano C, petitioner. Not even gonna attempt to pronounce it. Uh, Mr. Box.
Uh, yes, this, the petitioner here is Mr. Guy Capomo. There's a, a letter here from him seeking an extension. You may actually remember this one was before you, I want to say in October. They had actually missed their deadline the year before. Uh, it was in April of, of twenty twenty, and they didn't seek an extension until October of twenty twenty. Uh, it was a three to three vote here, therefore essentially recommending rejection of the extension. However, the board did pass the extension. The board passed the extension retroactive to when it would have expired for one year. So they essentially extended it from last April, when it initially expired, until this April, which is why it's before you this evening. Up to that point, they had not made much progress. I, I spoke with Mr. Van Tiflin before putting this on the agenda, and I spoke with him again today. There have now been four revisions to the regenerating plans. He says they are very close, so him as well as all of us at this time are in, in currents that we're recommending the extension.
So the start time will be?
It will be one year from, from today.
All right, start to?
Start time?
Yeah, the, the.
The extension would start today, if, if.
It go one?
Well, technically, it's gotta go to the board, so one year from when the board grants such an extension.
And I guess what I was asking, when would construction start?
Uh, according to what Mr. Van Tiflin expressed to me today, they, they will not need another extension. They're, they're very close to, to getting to the point where construction can begin soon.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience?
I'm not seeing Mr. Capomo on here this evening.
Okay, then we'll bring it before the commissioners. Anybody?
Do I have to go public?
Well, I gotta do commissioners first, then I'll go public and keep practicing.
Yeah.
Okay, no, 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 no comments from the commissioners, okay? Then we'll go to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak, Mr. Box? We're, they're opening at eight, oh, nine. Okay, then at eight, oh, or eight, ten, we'll go ahead and close the public portion. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield.
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We have a motion for the extension of time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oliver.
I'm going to give the, the given the extension time one, one year to, uh, part, permanent parcel, oh, eight, two, eight, three, seven, six, zero, zero, two.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Oliver.
This is, just for the record, this is a recommendation.
Recommendation, okay. Supported by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All business. Mr. Skirdow, Mr. Box, anything? Okay, public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
No one is in attendance at this time.
Okay, we don't have to make a motion for that. Commissioners go next. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Spatafora, you're, you said it first, and you're in person, so it's double.
Um, with respect to the general design concept, agenda item, uh, six B, and reading through Mr. Skirdow's report and the requirements, I read somewhere where the planning commission was to consider, uh, the actual P U D agreement. It looked like it was pertinent to this particular stage. I don't know if that was intentional, because there was no P U D agreement, or at least a draft of it included in the package. Is that something perhaps later on, uh, for the next step, maybe final P U D, that planning commission would take a look at it? And I only reference that only because it was mentioned in the report pertaining to the planning commission.
This is requirement, these are P U D. I think what happened was since we were, kind of, it's mysterious, we were so much in the flux of where they're going, and we're caught with the road department, and so we didn't here, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see it. Something went, so unofficial one, but it should come to any type of, even though you sent this on the dental design item, at some point, you need to follow up and approve it, or at least recommend approval of that P U D agreement, because that is gonna be vital in the end. The drawings with the P U D agreement, both are supposed to be reported with Compton County Register fees when this is all said and done, so we should get a copy of that to you.
Okay, that's when it's all said and done, before it comes back for the final P U D approval.
If every change in nature to this, the P U D agreement, we should have a running start, get that thing done, and then have a running start. Every time we get changed, we got something to work on. See where the change is.
Is that something, Mr. Box, you can request the petitioner for it if you don't have a draft in your office, or at least send it to the planning?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Duckfield?
Yeah, I just, I was thinking about the same item, just for a little different reason, just it might, and, and Mr. Spatafora might have valuable, uh, inside information is not the term I'm looking for, but something of that, industry information might be a better term on this. We've always had interesting times with our P U Ds. I know one of the things that some of the commissioners have been around a lot longer than I have, always have mentioned is the difficulty with people coming in with big plans and then building the part that they like the most and leaving the rest of it be. We've always had problems with that, and, and on the flip side, we want to balance the ability to, to do, you know, to do good developments, to make big developments that are maybe a little unusual, but, but are of value to the township as a whole. So I guess just one of the things is, I'm wondering, amongst the million other things that everybody has in their plates, um, if it makes any sense to look at the P U D process and see if we have any ability to give more flexibility to developers, to give us an idea, to be more able to market the idea and have, I guess, uh, confidence that they can, that they can come back to some, with something that'll be approved, but also the ability to, to, to go after users that they want for some of these commercial developments. I, I know that with the P U Ds, almost invariably, they seem to be mixed use for us. Um, and so I would assume that it's gonna be pretty common on a P U D that we're gonna have these types of issues. So just a thought, just a suggestion, maybe we should take a, another look at that. Um, maybe Mr. Spatafora might have some ideas pertinent to the township that, from, from the other side, that, that might be helpful. Um, but to, to, to let us, um, you know, still have the ability to, to, to look at things, but, but also try to understand that the process is difficult for the developer and to give them the opportunity to give us the best product they can. So, my only comment with that, um, other than to say, uh, miss seeing y'all, guys, tonight. I'm, I am healthy, uh, but I've seen a lot of people who aren't this week, and while I've passed all my tests and whatnot, I figured it was better that, uh, be, better that I didn't inflict the possibility on all of you. So, uh, thanks for, uh, putting up with me being remote and having voices break up and whatnot, but I think it was the best, uh, best call for tonight.
Thank you for that, Mr. Duckfield.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Bentley, Mr. Oliver, anybody? Okay. Then we go to the Compton Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Hardy, thank you. Couple things. Uh, one, we, the board trustees have extended the outdoor seating till October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Box. Skirdow's did a lot of work in that, and I think it's been pretty successful. So, added another year, so see how that goes. Parkland Rex, um, they've hired Erica Broll. She's local to our community. Comes from a great farm family, so I know she'll be a great employee. And that's about it, okay?
Mr. Oliver, just a quick question, our, well, I guess to Mr. Box as well. Are we thinking that's gonna be more of a long-term, um, ordinance addition after potentially the effects of COVID dieout? Are we thinking that's a, we thinking that's something that might stick around a little longer?
Yeah, I, I plan to touch on that here in about two minutes.
Okay, I'll be quiet and let you do your thing then, sorry.
All right, well, don't be too quiet, because you're the Z B A liaison.
That's, that's true. Um, we, uh, we had our first official in-person meeting, uh, last week. I, I think, uh, uh, we were the first ones, because we were the first month, had nobody attend, um, but we, uh, nobody from the public attend, I should say, uh, but it went pretty well for all that. Um, we're moving along with that. We've seen a lot of, a lot of traffic over there. We've talked about the items before. I won't go into the types of things we've seen, but um, these last, I don't know, five, six months have probably been as consistently busy as I've seen in the Z B A and well, the time I've been here, which has been somewhere near ten years now. So, um, I think people are, I, I think we're seeing the results of, of people sitting at their homes and, and thinking about improvements. I'm, I'm sure the building department is seeing this as well. We're, we've seen a lot of, of home, home type variance requests and, and development variance requests. Um, so, um, busy, things are moving along. Uh, we know the things that we've talked to the planning commission about, um, but, uh, everything seems to be chugging along pretty well. So, that'd be my update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duckfield. Planning Department items.
Yeah, so I just, I'll follow up on Charlie's comment. Uh, we did extend the temporary outdoor business spaces through October uh, or until, um, any restrictions um, are, are lifted, uh, whichever is sooner. Um, that being said, we use that as a template. We did draft some language, and we have an application. Seasonal outdoor businesses moving forward is gonna become a permanent thing. Actually, we're gonna see a board agenda in the future in discussions with the building department enforcement and the supervisor, this is actually gonna go on a code of ordinance system, which is why you didn't see it at planning commission. Uh, but, uh, it's gonna be on the board agenda, I believe, next week, might be one after that. Uh, but, uh, we do have that already set up and ready to go. Box?
Anything else?
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Spatafora. Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield.
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley. Okay.
Good, good night, everyone.
Adjourned at?
Tonight.
Eight, nineteen. Good night, everyone. Have a good night.